Rose, are you ready?
Sure.
Meeting is now called to order.
Roll call for the City Council meeting of Wednesday, December 20th, 2017 at 7:30 PM. Mr. Potowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I would that, as we go into our moment of silent meditation, we remember all of those in our community that have lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. Ask that we ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie. And finally, I want to ask that we remember the new council and the new administration that are coming in as we wrap up a year of service and for some of us, a decade-plus or however many years of service we've given as we transition. Let this be a peaceful, positive, and healthy transition with, again, city council members, county council members, as well as a new mayoral administration. And finally, just want to, again, push that we have the right information that is necessary for us to do the right and the best things for the citizens of the city of Erie.
And while we have a full house, I'd like to make all of you think long and hard about during this great holiday in the greatest country on this earth, that you remember those who are serving us overseas and in country, the proud men and women of the armed forces. Without them, we don't meet here today, and we don't meet here 200 years ago. So please, during this holiday, try to remember that there are those that are overprotecting us. Try to remember them in your prayers, and if you can, try to send them a little gift or thank their parents or their spouses. Thank you.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval minutes for the City Council meeting of December 6, 2017, and bills for payment on December 15 and 22, 2017. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Potowski.
Okay, we do presentations next, Rose?
Unless you want to give your plaques out first.
Yep, I could do that. It's customary at the last meeting that we honor those who are leaving us for the last meeting. And it's not a pleasant time, so I brought up Mr. Witherspoon, my Vice President, and I'd like to call up David Brennan first. What we're given is a small plaque for their service. Dave served from 2012 to 2018 for his conscientious and dedicated service to the citizens of Erie. I want to thank David. He brought a little different counsel, a little different attitude, a little different experience level. And we're going to miss him, especially his concern with the protection of assets in the city such as housing and getting involved in urban gardening and the revitalization of the city from an aesthetic standpoint. But David will miss you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. I have a little speech at the end here, but I want to thank everybody. It's really been a pleasure to be on council. It's been humbling. It's been inspiring, nerve-wracking many times. But I appreciate all the support from everyone who has ever voted for me, all the support from everyone in council, with everyone that works for the city, Rose, Marilyn, Lori, everybody. I thank you for everything, and thank you for being here today.
Thank you, David. And now the toughest act to follow, our spiritual leader, and the old man now. I'm glad that he's part of the old man crowd. Mr. Curtis Jones.
Well, you read his plaque. Why don't you read mine?
Are you okay?
No, I'm just kidding. As well, I will share some remarks later. But I am absolutely honored, the trust of all of you in this room. Many of you have voted for me, and some of you haven't, but you challenged me to be better. And so I appreciate and have a great appreciation for that. And it's been an honor to serve with several people, of course, this body currently and so many others who are not serving anymore. We haven't always agreed, but we always had the right intention and the right heart, and that'll get us where we need to go. So I'll share some more words later. I thank you for this recognition. And it's funny being the youngest and one of the old guys. It's kind of a bit of an interesting place to be in. So I'm honored, and I will take all the credit. You guys are here for us today, so we'll take that. And I will say this, because I know some of you may leave, and before we make our final comments at the end, whether we agree or not, whether we have the same process of getting to the goal, that's kind of irrelevant, because every process is valuable. But at the end of the day, we have to do what's best for the citizens and what's best for the next generation. And that has nothing to do with just us seven that are elected to this body and the three other elected officials that are in the city. It has to do with every citizen, every person who walks the streets, drives the streets, and breathes the air of our community. It is our community. We have to make it what we desire for it to be, and it can't be left to any one group to do it. It takes all of us. So I'm honored to be a part of the all of us, and I'm honored to be in that with you all. So thank you for this recognition, and, I mean, I've never been short-winded, so I start today, right? So again, I'm honored and I'm thankful. Thank you again.
Will the Mercy yours girls soccer team please come up? I don't think you were a good striker, though.
Rose.
You know what they called him when he played? Red Card Jones.
We wanted to recognize these young ladies and their coaches on a wonderful accomplishment. State champions for AA girls soccer in the state of Pennsylvania. And let's give them a round of applause for that. You made Erie proud, and we wanted to recognize you. You played with poise, you played with grace, and you played with class, and you represented your school well, and you represented your city well. When they were in, at the game on the television, it said Erie Mercy yours Prep. And so we were very proud that you represented our city in such a fine manner, and we wanted to recognize you for that. We have these citations for you from council. Be it resolved by the council of the city of Erie, whereas the city council wishes to pay special tribute to the Mercy yours preparatory school girls soccer team for winning their second PIAA class AA girls state soccer championship, defeating St. Basil's High School with the victory of 1 to 0 at Hershey Park Stadium on November 17, 2017. And whereas Coach Dr. Jamie Borowitz, returning as head coach since 2013, completing his 16th season as head coach with the aid of assistant coaches Aaron Jones and Amelia Rose Wagner, led the Mercy yours preparatory school girls soccer team to their second straight trip to Hershey as Western Region Champions, ending the season with a 24-2 record to receive the number-one ranking in this classification in the state standings. Therefore, be it resolved by the council of the city of Erie that this commendation is hereby presented to the 2017 Mercy yours Prep girls soccer team, school administration, coaches, and student body, and we extend our sincere congratulations on a job well done and best wishes for each member of the team for continued success in all of your future endeavors. Mr. Borowitz and, Mr. Jones, can you, I'm sorry, Mr., yeah, Jones, the other Mr. Jones. I'd like you to come up. These are for each of your girls. Thank you, Pharrell, that you did. I'll tell you, shake your hand here. And Dr. Borowitz, thank you so much. Do you want to say anything?
I would just say congratulations. I'm a proud Laker graduate of 1994. Go Lakers. I think there's some other Lakers in the house. Mr. Bibbs, Rhonda, Keisha, yep. You made us proud, not just the city, not just the legacy of Mercy yours Prep, but also your families. And so don't, and it trickles down to you. You are the product of a lot of different people's prayers, work, and Mr. Borowitz was there when I was there. He had more hair, a lot more hair. But you represented us well. Don't let what you did on the field be the end of your greatness. Take it beyond that. Be all of that and some. Use this as a tool to get to where you desire to be in every area. If nothing else, you know you can be a champion. That sounds like you're a winner to me. And so I'm honored to be a Laker, and I'm honored to be in the city of Erie with you in this region. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Come down.
Congratulations.
Everybody's tripping on the chair. Congratulations. Thank you, Sean.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
There goes the meeting. Okay, moving on, will Mr. Brennan, do you have a presentation?
Yes.
Mel Mel is next.
Oh. Oh, you want to go first, Mel? Okay. Yeah, go ahead. Okay. Well, Mel Witherspoon's going to give a presentation first.
It's going to be interesting. Each one of those counts on beating you, just so you know.
That's a lot of credits.
Thank you very much. I'd like to have Sean Dugan. Sean Dugan represents Erie Insurance Group. And you've seen me here before doing the same thing, because it's very, very important that our community is supported by our business and industry. Erie Insurance supports the Spoon Summer League, which is also a city rec league. And his support allowed 316 individual boys and girls to participate in the summer league. We thank him very much. Thank you very much, Sean.
Thank you, Mel. Thank you very much. I'll be brief. I just, first of all, I'd like to say thanks to Mel. He's been a longtime partner in this, and as everybody in this room knows, what a great program he runs here and the time and commitment he has put in over the years. So again, on behalf of Erie, thanks for everything that you've done, Mel.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Lionel Hamer. Is Mr. Hamer here? Okay, he's not here. We was going to present Lionel with an award for 25 years with the Spoons League, 25 years with the Burton Street League, 17 years with the Strong Vincent Program under Coach Shannon. He's not here, but I'll make sure he receives his award. Thank you. Let me ask you, Jesse Tate, is Jesse Tate here? Come up, Jess. Jesse, I'm going to give this award to Jesse, because Jesse has been with the league for 27 years. He's been with the Strong Vincent Program for about 25 years, and along with Hammer. We call him Hammer. His name is Lionel Hamer, but we call him Hammer. He's a big fella. He don't take any mess. He does a good job. So I'll let Jesse speak on behalf of Lionel.
Thank you, Mel. When Mel started the league in 1990, I was one of the first persons that he actually acted, actually kind of fooled me into the league, because at that time, I was having some troubles myself and with the law and things of that nature. And in 1990, he brought me on that league and really turned my life around, so I owe a lot to this man. And not too far after that, Hammer came on, and Hammer's worked with me for 25 years out of 27 years that I was in the league, plus 17 years out of 25 years at Strong Vincent. So I just wanted to honor him. Too bad he's not here today, because Hammer, he's somebody I love. He's a very special dude, and he works hard. He's one of the backbones of the league, as you know, Mel. You know, we do the administration part, but he does the security part that keeps everybody safe and everybody off the court, and it's just a shame he's not here today. But give him a round for Hammer.
And we have one more presentation, Mr. David Brennan?
Yes. Yeah, I have a presentation today, a culmination for Mr. Tom Hagan. I'm sure people have heard about him in the room, because everything he's done in our city for development, for, just for so much growth in areas has come from Tom and what he's supported in Erie and what he has been doing in Erie for the past, I don't know how many years. But I just want to read off the culmination here. Really, this culmination is for his commitment to historic preservation in the city and also Pennsylvania. You know, Tom has done so much. I just remembered a couple of things. He's worked on numerous local and state boards and commissions that have identified with stark preservation. He received an honorary award from the American Institute of Architects, the Pennsylvania Chapter 93 for his contribution to the professions as a non-architect. He won the Pennsylvania Preservationist of the Year Award in '87 for the PA Historical and Museum Commission, received an award of Merit 95. He also received the award for outstanding service in the field of local history. And locally, the campus of the Erie, the History Center is named after him. So all these honors are for what he's done in Erie and Pennsylvania and even nationally. He's done a lot of great things. Tom Hagan, one of Erie's most prominent citizens and corporate leaders, chairman of the Board of Erie Insurance Companies. Erie's only a Fortune 500 company or business, and also chairman of the Board of Custom Engineer Group. He remains committed to Erie. He is honored in recognition of his lifelong commitment to stark preservation and his unwavering dedication to public service in the greater Erie community and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. This commendation is hereby presented to Mr. Tom Hagan for his conscientious and dedicated efforts on behalf of Erie community, and we extend him our appreciation and our best wishes in all his future endeavors. So I thank Mr. Hagan, and we'll definitely get this combination to him as soon as possible. Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Is there anyone here for repository sales? Go ahead, we'll wait for you. Just give your name, address, and the property you're interested in. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chitisha Gamble. I'm here to represent Virginia Gamble, and the property that she wants to purchase is 1202 East 21st.
Go ahead, Mr. Jones. Thank you for coming in, Ms. Gamble. Can you tell us a little bit about the property? Is there a building on it? Is it an empty lot? And what do you plan to do with the property?
Yes, sir. The property is actually empty as of now, no debris, no anything on it besides, you know, winter wear and tear. She wants to actually fence up the property, you know, maintenance it throughout the seasons, you know, during spring, you know, weekly, during the fall seasons, biweekly, and the winter seasons, monthly, you know, just keeping it, you know, clear debris, the grass low three inches, you know, below three inches, and just basically use it for like, she do a lot of family events. So she, like, purchases, you know, she have to find different places to host these events for the kids and things of that nature during summer. And I think this will be a good place, you know, to fence up and host different family events for the children.
Does she live adjacent or to the property or nearby or?
Yes, well, she do and she don't. The people that will help her maintenance the property actually live in the area as well. She live more west of the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones?
No, this is good.
Anybody, any other council person want to talk about? Thank you. We'll vote on this a later meeting and get back to you.
Mr. President.
Yes.
I think, Ms. Gamble, when we spoke before the meeting, you needed to give some ID to the clerk's office, so, Ms. Rose, would you be able to get that from her?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens here for repository sales? Are there any other citizens here for repository sales?
Did I do that door issue? Yeah.
One last time, are there any other citizens here for repository sales? Hearing none? We're going to move on to the citizens-to-be-heard portion. Before you talk, just get in line, and I have to check, see if anybody wrote in. I don't believe they did.
I don't see anyone, Mr. President.
Okay. Give your name and address, please.
Art Leopold, 5341 Apple Grove Lane, Erie PA. I wanted to speak this evening, just to remind council and citizens that tomorrow night at the Jefferson Society, Deputy Secretary Kirkland is coming up to speak regarding the issue of the recent report about Erie in 24/7 Wall Street in USA Today about unfortunately Erie being named the worst city for blacks to reside in in America. It's going to be a very important meeting. It was called, I think, just recently. I understand that Mayor-elect and soon-to-be Mayor Joe Schimber and Kathy Dahlkemper are going to also be at the meeting as co-chair, and I want to remind folks to, if you can make that meeting, that would be a good thing. Council recently heard about community benefit agreements, and that's one of the solutions that's been brought up to help with the situation that we have in Erie, to help with employment and education and so many other things in our minority communities. And I do welcome council support, and certainly it would be good if you could make the meeting tomorrow. And I know it's kind of spur of the moment, but we just found out about a couple days ago. Also, as always, I stand in support of a public hearing for the McBride viaduct and that issue and what's going to happen, and I trust that there will be new information and a genuine discussion that would carry on in a public meeting that may change the calculus as we look at that project. And I hope that you will, you voice some support for it, and I hope that we can make that happen. Also, I do stand, continue to stand in support of decriminalization of marijuana. I know that there's an ordinance that's been drawn up. I understand that ordinance didn't contain the paraphernalia clauses in it, and those are important, so you don't have to go back in and redo it. But I continue to support that, and I trust that come the first of the year, that we can see some action in that. I do thank council for your support on that. And Councilman Brenneman and Councilman Jones, thank you for your service. I know this is your last meeting, and I want to wish an early birthday. People don't know Curtis Jones has a birthday tomorrow, and I want to wish him a happy birthday. Thank you all.
Let me ask him.
Good evening.
Art, what time is that meeting? Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry, Jason.
Good afternoon, I mean, good afternoon, sorry. It's been a long day for me because of what happened in Washington DC. I'm just still revealing, still processing what happened with the GOP tax scam, basically. So while I'm here tonight, and I first want to point out one thing. Councilman David Brenneman, over the years, you have supported me, you've talked to me, you engaged with me, and you opened up my eyes to not just about the preservation for Erie or for city service, but you have inspired me to keep moving forward in my journey, my path for city services and to serve the city of Erie. And on behalf of myself and a lot of my people that work with me, thank you. Thank you for being a pillar in Erie, and thank you for giving me big shoes to fill. Now I go over to Curtis Jones. Big shoes to fill is one thing, because knowing you and knowing how you served the city at a young age, I'm only 37. You stepped up whenever you were in your mid-20s. And with your guidance and being a faith-based civil servant, you've given me more faith, more hope, and more of love for my hometown. And that's why I wanted to start off my conversation is, I think the next city council administration should be transparent with saying it's okay to love the city of Erie. It's okay to have hope, faith, and love in our neighbors and our citizens, because of what has occurred in the past several years with the negative image and the negative presentation the media and citizens do to each other. If we do what the Golden Rule applies, Luke, Chapter 6, verse 31, "Do unto others as you want done to yourself," we can overcome adversities, we can overcome problems and issues that face not just the LGBT community, which I am an advocate for, but for all the minority communities and for all the communities that live within the city proper. So that's why we would like to come to today. I'd like to address one thing is that we have a Pennsylvania Fairness Act that needs to be passed in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. If that is passed, that Senate Bill, that's Senate Bill 974, that's just adds sexual orientation and gender identification to the Commonwealth Constitution. And if that's added, the Erie County Human Relations Commission that was started in the early 90s can enforce laws of discrimination against LGBT members in the city of Erie and Erie County and in this region. And that's why I'd like to start with what I stopped on the last time I came, whenever Citizens to Be Heard was available to myself, is gay conversion therapy ban. I asked for a study session in the next city council meeting, or in 2018, to go over putting up an ordinance for gay conversion therapy within the city proper beginning in 2018. The city of Pittsburgh was the first municipality to have a gay conversion therapy ban put on, meaning that anybody under the age of 18 on, meaning that anybody under the age of 18, that is, feeling that they want to come out, they want to live their American dream, or they want to be themselves and not be converted into something that they're not. I think if we have city councils' study session, and city councils' approval, and city council leaning forward for the LGBT community, and we work together to put a gay conversion therapy ban, it will help the Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index from our lowest rating and will elevate it up. And whenever the ban happens, if it happens, God hoping it doesn't, fine, the individual $500. $250 will give to the city council to go, to give to Human Resources for our diversity position, for diversity in City Hall. With the new mayoral administration, I do hope that Joe, the new mayor, will implement that in City Hall, in hiring LGBT members, in hiring difference in our building that we call City Hall. And also take the other $250 and give it to the organization's Northwest Pride Alliance and Greater Erie Alliance for Equality to continue their missions in supporting the visibility and transparency of the LGBT community in the city of Erie. Yes, we have had leaders before in the community step forward to try to do their best, but that's work for transparency, equality, and for, not just for my community, but the community in general, and happy holidays, and thank you.
My name is Freda Tepfer. I'm a certified orientation and mobility specialist. I live at 1738 West 23rd Street in Erie. First of all, I would like to urge all of the members of the city council and everybody here today and anybody who's watching the meeting either live or on YouTube to please go to the porterey.org website, read their draft master plan, and comment it on before December 31st. If you fail to take a look at this, then you only have yourself to blame if you end up with a Ferris wheel at Dobbins Landing, a whole bunch of buildings at Dobbins Landing, so that if you choose to go there for a sense of relaxation, you won't be able to see across the buildings from the water from one side to the other. Also, they're trying to do the same thing at Liberty Park. Please take the opportunity to look at this, and it's our bayfront, and we should really treasure it and make sure that what happens there is something that we approve of. I also want to commend my fellow citizens and businesses who have taken the time to clear snow off their walks and admonish those who don't bother, especially all the businesses. I drove in on 12th today, and all the businesses along 12th on the south side of the street, nobody had cleared the snow. Many of the businesses on Green Garden between 21st and 12th don't clear the snow. People walk there. People are trying to get to work, to school wherever, and the longer, the snow is still there because it's still piled up. So I wish that people would take the trouble to take care of their fellow citizens and clear the snow from their walks, especially businesses. I would like to once again urge those who have the ability to affect this, to see that there is a hearing on the McBride Viaduct. Basically, my belief is that the plan as proposed is not the plan that was agreed to. There were purpose and needs, and no pedestrian needs were expressed except for those about people running across the highway, because there was never a contemplation of a crossing at 12th and the bayfront connector. Well, now there is, and there has been no public comment on that. There has been no real review over the fact that there was never a no-action alternative, and that the cost of, that there should have been an alternative that analyzed the cost of rehabilitating the viaduct for pedestrian use only. This is a vital link, and as Reverend Mock has said several times, and I've had the pleasure to hear him, that would be so meaningful for the community, that would send a message to a community often forgotten and overlooked that the city cares about them, of a way to ensure opportunity and hope for the most disadvantaged part of our city. And I think that a hearing is overdue on the changes and the fact that this project is not what was contemplated. I also want to urge the city to enforce the provisions that ensure that people with disabilities have equal access to the sidewalks when there's construction, and that Erie Insurance, Gannon, and all the other people with their large construction projects behave respectfully to people and provide adequate notification and a clear alternative path to get around in our city. Having signs up is of no use to somebody with a visual impairment. I want to thank Councilman Brennan. You have brought so much energy to the council and all the helpful ordinances and things that you've brought forth, and I hope that some of our new council members ensure that your native, the lawn ordinance doesn't sit and molder away than the alternative lawn ordinance. And I want to thank you, Councilman Jones. I know we haven't always united our eye on things, but I appreciate all the service that you have provided to our city, and thank you both.
My name is Howard Bibbs. I reside at 2931 Chestnut Street. I'm here today to just give you some feedback on a meeting that I went to similar to this at the school district. I spoke to the school district in terms of the racial of children and teacher within the school district. I spoke to them in terms of their union, and also I spoke to them in terms of the sheer forced compliance tax, which, under the School Tax Act, states that something like that need to be voted on. I know the school district, I've heard, I don't know, I've heard, that the school district wants to add an addition to Erie High. That addition might be anywhere between 60 to 80 million dollars. If they're going to ask the taxpayer to pay that type of taxes, I think that 60 to 80 million dollars could have went into the six schools which they have on the selling block right now, whereby those schools could have been renovated so that they'd have been able to stay within their neighborhoods. After that meeting, one of the members met me in the hallway, and he told me that that was not a tax. Okay? You know, like I'm supposed to believe him. That was not a tax, but that was a tax that they put up on us. You know, you paid your tax in February, then you had to turn around and pay it again in September. That happened first with landlords, did not happen with regular residency, okay? Then a year, or maybe a year or so afterwards, they did it with the regular residency homeowners, because that was an infringement upon the Fair Tax Act. You know, for some reason, people act like they don't know anything about the Fair Tax Act. You can't tax me and don't tax somebody else, you know? So that was very unfair. But they tried to persuade me that that was not a tax, but it was a tax. At the same time, these individuals used our children. They were like the Piper. They used our kids, took them to Harrisburg so that they can get additional funding for the school district, which is great. But the time they heard that that 14 million was coming, they gave raises to everybody at the top, and they gave raises to the aides, which was nice. The aides probably needed the raise, but at the same time, I mean, how can you give raises and you're still begging for money? Every time the school superintendent is on TV, he's worse than Badham. Badham came on TV crying, "It's for the kids, it's for the kids, they deserve this, they deserve this, they deserve that." But the time they get money, they give it to higher management. That's not giving it to the kids, and not one time did they ever said, "Thank you to our children" for the time that they put into helping to obtain that money. Now, they gave praises to everybody else, gave out plaques, whatever, but not one time did they say thanks to the children of the Erie School District for the part that they played. Their children weren't there. Their children goes to another school district. And another thing that the council is going to have to start paying attention to, the tax base is constantly dwindling, okay? When reassessment comes around, how can you reassess an empty home? If everybody's leaving, where's going to be the reassessment? How is that going to be fair? People are leaving. So there's problems that we're not thinking about now. My friends tell me, "Well, Howard, you got nothing to do but stay home and watch cartoons, so you need to be telling us about these things." I do try to tell people about these things, but they don't listen until it's time. I can remember 12 years ago, I came here and I was relentless on the school superintendent Barker. I called him Simon Bar Sinister. I told him that, I was telling everybody, there's something wrong. There are certain flags that I can see. See, I took economics in school. I can see flags, okay? I see flags now. They're saying that 60 million dollars for these schools, that they want to add in addition to tech, I mean Erie High, but at the same time, that 60 million dollars could have went into those six schools that they have on the chopping block to renovate them, whatever, and keep them in the neighborhoods where these kids would have schools within their neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
First, I want to go out to God and all the members on the city council. My name is David Vactor. I worked at Hammermill, I worked at General Electric, I did 28 years in the Army Reserves, and I'm here for something that's real simple. My neighbor has four Shih Tzu dogs, little poodles, and he puts them out. It could be cold, it could be warm, it could be any time of the day, but I got video here today. He put them out at noon time, and the dogs, they put them out and they shut the door, and the dogs jump to get back in, and they bark, and they bark, and they bark. And it could be 1:00, 2:00 in the morning, and I called the police a couple times. They come out heated and told them, this is silly, I got trained skunks that make his dogs bark. The police came over and told me, he said, "You trained skunks?" I said, "No." You know, but, and I even stood in the middle of the street with this guy, I'm not going to call his name, and prayed with him. I said, "Come on, man, I've been here 13 years. My neighbor's behind me, been 40 years with this guy, and we can't get along with each other. Nothing, nothing helps." He puts his boat in front of, he puts a boat in front of my driveway, and I got a 34-foot trailer, I can't get out when his boat's there. And I don't talk to him, because if I talk to him, it's going to be a fight. And I've been, like I said, I've been talking to him for, I've been there 14 years, kicking and doing, and this is silly, isn't it?
Yes.
This is silly. We should be able to be neighborly and get along. We can't. So I told the police, this is the night Pittsburgh Steelers got beat. I was already mad.
Say that again, what happened?
Pittsburgh lost, and I went to bed at 8:00, because I was mad. I heard, I heard at midnight, I thought, it was a riot, and my neighbor was banging on the guy's door, and he couldn't take no more. And the police came out, and they told him, he was talking to the owner of the dogs, he had went home, and I was on my front porch, right across the street, and he started talking, and I ran out there, and I said, "Tell the truth, tell the truth, why we called you." You know, so, and I talked to them, as I talked to the ones a couple years ago, and I don't know what else to do. You know, I don't go over there, because I know, he's 72, I'm 65. What would we look like fighting? Two old fools in the middle of the street fighting, you know? I even get along with his son, talk to his son. I told his son, "Your dad, your dad is so many words," you know? He said, "Yeah, I know." He knows, but I don't know what to do now. What should I do?
Did you call animal enforcement by any chance?
Oh, yeah, I meant to say that.
What did they say?
He won't answer the phone. I left my name several times.
If you leave your name with the secretary, I will personally call them for you. But I know what you have to put up with.
And it ain't the dogs.
No, no, I had to knock on my neighbor's door and say, you know, "The dog's going to die out there in the cold."
That's what I'm saying. And these are house dogs. They jump to get, one, as soon as he comes down, he's got one paw up, and the other one's jumping to get back in, and then they got straps on them, right? They're going to hang themselves, and then if they don't get hung, we got raccoons and we got coyotes.
Yeah, more than I do.
And this is 2625 Pearl Avenue.
Leave the address of the, you know, of the house that you're acquiring about.
Up here with him?
Yeah.
Okay, hey, thanks a lot.
Sure.
My name is Connor Lessey. I'm at 1021 West 30th.
We got another speaker up there. Please give him the same courtesy. Thank you.
Welcome. A few things I want to discuss with you guys. I know, last time I was here, I discussed with Councilman Jones about bringing solar roads to Erie. It would be very beneficial for our city to bring them here, because instead of transporting water from all the way as far as the city limits go south to the bayfront, that water, instead of going all the way to the bayfront to get treated, can get treated under the road. And also, there's warning systems, keeps it snow and ice free, so we would have to reduce less plows, and I've already designed multiple roads that could use these solar roads. By looking at a city map, I've decided which roads should get them based off of how many times the plows are constantly having to go up due to traffic. So it would reduce the plows from being on main roads like these snow emergency routes and put them more towards the areas where people that need to leave to go to work to make these businesses possible during a snowstorm. For example, I was on my block, the 1000 block West 30th, the plows came by on a Saturday, came in the morning, people's cars, even pickup trucks, were covered up to the window of the door, and they just came down, did it once, and then pretty much just let it sit there until it melted recently this week. And a lot of people were stuck on the south side of the road due to the plows going by. And also with these solar roads, when a plow would go to turn onto a solar road to go onto the next road, it provides a lot more light and more visibility for that plow truck driver to be able to see curbs and stuff, because I've noticed a lot of curbs, cars are getting taken out. I have a ham radio that I use as a scanner and listen to the local police as I'm out snow shoveling in case there's ever an accident, to go help out and clear some snow to help out, because that's what I do. I do a lot of things to help out with our police officers and local emergency officials and stuff like that. And a few other things is like hydrants. Some people don't realize that they have, if they have hydrant on their property, to do that as well, along with the corners. And I see a lot of times they'll do their walkways, but will just pile all the snow on the corners and where the hydrants are, and if there's ever a fire and these firefighters can't dig out all the snow because it's ice and snow covered the hydrants, they won't be able to access it to use a fire hose if there's ever an emergency. I do volunteer to go clear a lot of hydrants in my area. I do a lot of help clearing corners and areas that usually don't get cleared during a snowstorm, so that way people are able to keep walking, keep moving, and go about their day. their day. I do want to work with the city council in trying to bring these solar roads to the city. It would save us not only a lot of money, but a lot of time and hassle, and a lot of, a lot less work needed to be done to fix these roads, because they would last a lot longer, 'cause they're made of tempered glass. They can withstand the weight of a semi truck. So they're, you know, they have warning systems built in. You can program the lights, you won't have to buy paint for the roads. There's, I have the website right here, it's soleroadways.com. And I would just like to see this happen in the near future. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Mr. President.
Can you, you still have my email address?
Uh, yeah.
Shoot me an email, and we can finish some conversation.
I'll send you an email on behalf of the city.
We'll, we'll talk, 'cause I don't want to break the rules of council talking this way, but just shoot me an email, okay? All right, thank you.
You almost get a reprieve tonight, though.
Actually, I won't take advantage of that.
Go ahead, Ms. Ossen.
Thank you. Council, nice to see you tonight. I want to thank you for your patience in listening to all of the citizens, and I want to especially thank our chairman, Councilman Kowalski, for your long endurance of an over two-hour meeting last week to discuss the viaduct. I really appreciate your patience, and I also appreciate your challenge. One of the things that you said to us is that some of the things that were raised in the meeting were things that you hadn't heard of before. And so to respond to that, we have compiled a short draft list of a plan of how to actually keep the McBride Viaduct as a non-vehicular bridge. I'm not gonna read it in detail, I'm just gonna hit the highlights and then hand you a copy. It includes first, to hold a public hearing, something that I know that Councilwoman Arrington has been discussing with you along with Councilman Brennan. Secondly, it's to establish partnerships, secure sponsors, and create a leaf-like 501(c)(3), something that we've already started working on. Thirdly, it's the effort, the next step you would need to do is to actually reject all the demolition bids that have been, that are gonna be coming in, and actually, they've come in today, they're gonna be reviewed over the next few weeks. They need to be rejected, and then you need to revise the bids regarding the scope of work and to actually repair the bridge instead of demolish it, and then send the bids back out again. Lastly, and this is the most complicated part, but it's, it's got some really obvious pieces, is to gather the $3 million that is actually necessary to stabilize the structure. We already know from our meeting last week that PennDOT is ready to give the city 1.7 million or more to stabilize the bridge. Then we have several other sources of money. We would like to investigate receiving a portion of the $32 million in state funds that have been designated for the bayfront and for up to 12th Street where the viaduct does connect. Third source of money would be the new legislation that was just passed last night by county council, creating a fund specifically to manage municipal roadways, bike paths, and bridges. And we understand from two of the councilmen that the viaduct would be eligible for this, however, would require that the city of Erie apply on the behalf of that bridge. Lastly, with the help of the incoming administration's new city planner and also grant writer, we have begun to investigate a number of grants that would be appropriate for this organization to apply for. These are federal grants, state grants, and private grants, covering everything from kid safety, public health, urban design, walkability, place making, infrastructure repair, poverty, abatement, and economic development. And I'll share all those with you at the conclusion of my remarks today. But again, I want to thank you very much. I know that was supposed to be a shorter meeting, and it was very kind of you to take the time to be with us. I want to also thank Sonia Arrington, and actually, I want to commend you as a college professor. I'm excited to know that you're a non-traditional student, getting a degree, and I think that more people need to take that up in life. I mean, I think that my own husband went to college in his 40s and became a nurse and really enjoyed it. And so I think that people sometimes don't recognize the opportunities that are still available to them. So congratulations on your continued studies. And also, I want to thank you for your years and years of work with Matt Vee and the attempts to keep our children safe in the community. We recognize that, all of us talk about it frequently, about your tireless work that has led you here to this public office, and we appreciate that. And also, your leadership with the viaduct and in trying to help us find a path towards saving this bridge. I wanted to thank Councilman Witherspoon, especially for his work. I've been over to Pennsylvania Avenue and saw dozens of young men busy on your court, and that is just a real testament to your years of commitment with your own sports and then how you're bringing it to the community. And I want to point out that that area of the city is just blocked from the viaduct, and I'm sure that some of those young people actually make use of the bridge to get to your court. I want to thank Mr. Mursky, Councilman Mursky. You have been committed to East Avenue, also, again, right on connecting to the viaduct, and your work to bring businesses back to that historic business quarter is something that we want to help you continue to do through by revitalizing the viaduct. I wanted to personally thank Jim Winarsky. He might not remember this, but your business and car repair has been really important to me, and you've helped make the city more beautiful by getting the dent out. Thank you. I wanted to thank the two outgoing councilmen. I'm very aware of the work that Dave Brennan has done, because he's been a key member of Preservation Erie, an organization that I helped found several years ago. And as a part of that, you have brought a lot of the information to the council, I know, and also, you've worked tirelessly for the demolition delay, and that is something very, very important. Thank you. And last, but not least, I want to point out that Curtis Jones is the most sharp-dressed person I've seen on council consistently. And I'm not alone in thinking this. I was in the back row earlier when the Merciless Mothers were here, and they were commenting on your bowtie. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
Adam Trot, 531 West Sixth Street, second floor. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, everybody. I don't have a bag of gifts like Lisa just dropped off, but I do want to thank you for your service this year. And I also want to say, I'm real happy to see Greg up and around. Greg and I go back years ago with Kiwanis, and although he and I have been kinda adversarial in recent times, I never, ever lost a feeling of...
I had to do that once to him. Sorry, Adam.
No, that's fine. I never lost a feeling of friendship with him, 'cause I, 'cause I know him beyond the issues that we're adversarial on, so it's good to see you back, Greg. It was, the meeting was open with the comment that there's hope that city council has the right information. And that has been our advocacy the whole time for the McBride Viaduct. City council can authorize a public hearing, and we're asking that you speak up for the people and you take strong consideration to do that, because it gives an open examination of this project. We found out, or got it confirmed, that the funding for the demolition project is not at risk at this time. We have plenty of time. The project schedule to demolish is not at risk. PennDOT stated they need six to eight weeks from receiving the bids, which they will, which are due no later than tomorrow. So that puts all that into February. We think that this is a golden opportunity to start off 2018 with the right tone, that city council does represent everybody in Erie. What has happened with this viaduct project is that in, in the process of the studies and the meetings and the final determination, there was lacking the actual professional concern about non-vehicular traffic. And that is what framed the entire process and its outcome. Since that time, there has been a lot of public conversation about non-vehicular traffic. So the question about political will, we think the winds are changing. And we can really put a good face on it and a good faith effort by having this public hearing. And let's really get the issues out on the table. This project essentially, I, I think, honestly, I think it was gotten into with the best intentions. You know, somebody thought there was a grave liability that will hurt the city's books, and they had a chance to get it removed off the books at only a 5% cost, which is a great deal. The problem is that that neighborhood, that is a serious place making element for that neighborhood, and you're crushing that neighborhood in the interest of the overall city budget. And since that decision was made, we have found out a ton of information where, no, it actually doesn't threaten the city budget. We not only seem like we can get it paid for to repair it, but then the maintenance can be sustained by a P3. And I can, to be frank with you, I think for the few thousand that it would cost to keep the storm drains clear every year, which is what caused all the problems, I'd bet you, we can get that every year just from Erie Givens Day. Seriously, I think it's, it's that easily attainable, and then thereby the city not be saddled with the, the maintenance concern. Bridges, in the normal sense, are created because there's a destination at either end. And a lot of the bridges that were cited as examples, there are things at either end of the bridge. Here at the McBride Viaduct, the destinations are there, they're just not as sparkling as bigger projects. You know, we were discussing earlier today the Wayne Street Pedestrian Bridge in Chattanooga, and there are destinations at either end, an aquarium, a restaurant district, that sort of thing. They're flashy. If you save the bridge, it attracts developers with money, right? The McBride Viaduct doesn't have the flash, but those destinations at either end are just as critical to the people that live there. So we don't want to see it torn away. And at this point, then, thank you for your service, happy holidays, and Happy New Year. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? We're looking at you, Mr. McCall. I got your number.
I had to get him one time.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
You know, I wouldn't be down here if I didn't feel that I should be down here. I have a few issues, of course, you know that. 'Cause if I didn't, I wouldn't be down here. I want to talk to you about, back here about a few months ago, they was talking about the racism in the, in the city of Erie. One time, I remember one time, somebody come here from Harrisburg, and they said, "Wasn't no racism here." And you know what? I've been wondering ever since then, what planet was they on? We're not on the same planet. Ain't no racism here. Racism is just, is so thick that you could cut it with a dull knife. Look at the leadership and tell me ain't no racism here. All the y'all there have racial problems. Every one of you up there. Don't fool yourself. Be, be honest. Try to be honest to yourself. God don't like ugliness, and racism is ugly. I, I don't know. I don't know. We have racism among us. I'm speaking of the black community. Y'all like to call us black, but we're not black. We're, we're peoples of color. Thanks to your fathers that came along ahead of you, they went through our race, they went through the race of the Indians. I, I think you understand what I'm trying to say. Anyway, we didn't ask to come here. You brought us over here in the belly of boats. And even now, we're treated worse than the foreigners are coming in. They're treated better than we are, and we're paying taxes. We shouldn't have to pay no taxes. Shouldn't have to pay no taxes. We don't get no service for 'em. Only time we see the police is when somebody done snitched and told them, "You'll find them drugs back there somewhere in the black neighborhood, black neighborhood." What can, what? You tell me somebody black that got a boat big enough to bring them drugs over here from over wherever they come from. I, I got a boy, and he's a good boy. He a young man, but he a boy to me. The police used to pick on him, because he had a nice car, he got a nice motorcycle. Everybody don't, everybody don't like the ghettos. I lived in the ghettos. Used to been, used to then be ghetto, but it's ghetto now. We got to do something about this racism, and it's not good. It's not good for our kids. You, you claim to be Christians, but you lying to God, and he gonna deal with that in his time. I promise you that. I promise you that. This ain't my doing or saying. You read your Bible, and you'll find it in there. I can't tell you just where, but I done wrote, I done read that Bible. You should try it. You know, I had an accident the other day, last week. A guy hit me in the back and jumped out and said, "I done tore his car." Now, he got a little scratch on him. If it's six inches, it wouldn't be six inches, I don't think. He wants to get another car, and it's his fault, 'cause when you hit somebody from the back, it's your fault. That's what the police told me. That's what every insurance told me. A woman cut over in front of me, and I tapped on the back, she bit my fender. I went to them, "Oh, no, you hit her in the back." I wish y'all get your lies straight. Get that lie straightened out. Either when somebody hit you on the back, it's their fault, which I believe it's their fault when they hit you on the back. It don't take an atomic science to figure that out. When you hit somebody on the back, you don't have control of your automobile. You don't have control, 'cause you done hit somebody. I hit her, I tapped, 'cause she cut over in front of me. A car was going along in front of her, he stopped to turn, she just cut over on me. Y'all need to get things straightened out, more so about this racism. You know? I thank you for your time. I know you don't want to hear what I got to say, but I'm gonna say it if it hurts you. I got to say it. When you keep some in, you blow up, you get angry inside. I don't want to do that. I don't want to do that. Thank you for your time.
We'll see you next meeting.
Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Are there any other citizens to be heard? One more time. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. Rose?
Ordinances for final passage. Council file 15607, official ordinance number 302017, and ordinance fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for the fiscal year 2018, beginning on January 1st, 2018, and ending on December 31st, 2018. That a tax rate for general government purpose for the fiscal year beginning on January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018, is hereby fixed and levied at the rate of 11.64 mils upon each dollar of assessed valuation of real estate taxable for city purposes in the city of Erie during the year 2018, or upon each $100 of assessed valuation of real estate for taxes, tax purposes in the city of Erie. That said levy for debt service purposes of the city of Erie for the year 2018 is enacted at a rate of $3,310,172, and this amount will be transferred from the general fund to the debt service fund. By Mr. Kowalski and seconded by Mr. Winarsky, that council file ordinance bill number 15607, and now known as official file ordinance number 302017, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mursky, Mr. Winarsky, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kowalski. City council pass official file ordinance number 302017, finally by a seven, nay zero. a seven, nay zero. Council file fifteen six oh eight, official ordinance number thirty-one twenty seventeen, an ordinance of the city of Erie, county of Erie, and Commonwealth of Pennsylvania adopting the general fund and certain other budgets for the fiscal year, beginning January first, 2018, and ending December thirty first, 2018, that the sum of seventy-nine million, three hundred and seventy thousand, five hundred and thirty-eight dollars is hereby appropriated to the general fund and the total budget, including other fund budgets, total one hundred and thirty-eight million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars, as more fully described in supporting detail.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I'm gonna vote for this. I did want the citizens to know, one of the things that we were looking at, putting in the budget, is money for the land bank, the city land bank that we've started. What we decided to do was hold off until we get more information on what the county did last night, and how that affects the city of Erie. But we do realize that we can't wait for the county to start a land bank, because you have to talk to every municipality, every school district, get them on board. And it took our land bank, just with the city and talking to the school district and the county, to get everyone on board, and then apply to the state. It took us almost eight months to get our land bank up and running. Time is of the essence, and we can't wait on blight another year to get this operation moving. So in the coming year, I will be addressing the land bank and looking at cutting some money out of the budget from a line item to get our land bank started and start tackling that blight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mersky.
By Mr. Kwiatowski, seconded by Mr. Winarski, that council file ordinance bill number fifteen six oh eight, and now known as official file ordinance number thirty-one twenty seventeen, be finally passed by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. City council pass official file ordinance number thirty-one twenty seventeen, finally by a seven, nay zero. Council file number fifteen six oh nine, an ordinance amending Part V Traffic Code Title Five, Stopping, Standing, and Parking, Article five twenty-one Parking Generally, Article five twenty-three Parking Meters, and Article five thirty Immobilization of Vehicles, by increasing penalty provisions, redesignating off-street parking facilities, authorizing the issuance of parking permits, deleting reference to the city of Erie traffic court, and adding Article five thirty-one Administrative reimbursement.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Mersky.
I'd like to make an amendment, a motion to amend this ordinance. What I would like to do is amend Article five thirty point zero two, and change the number of tickets from five tickets to three tickets over thirty days old for immobilization of the vehicle. The rationale is that we, basically now you can have four tickets perpetually, and nobody's enforcing the rule. You know, in teaching, I give the kids three strikes. In baseball, there's three strikes. I think, you know, three strikes with a parking ticket is more than fair to our citizens in order to pay their parking ticket before they get the boot. I don't know if we can get a second on that.
Mr. President, I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Witherspoon and Mr. Jones.
Okay.
Give it to the outgoing.
Oh, yeah. Give it to Mr. Jones, he wants every one.
Yeah, the boot, right.
There you go. No, those are good comments, Mr. Mersky.
Thank you. A little common sense, really.
Anybody, anybody else want to comment?
Well, no, I think, Mr. President, too, just, I mean, I know it's just kind of a taboo conversation, but I think with the future administration, future members of council, as well as those that are staying on this body, you know, last year, year before, we did some significant work together to deal with back debt in a particular area that caused us to find revenue that was literally sitting on a desk, literally sitting somewhere, because we just didn't enforce and go out and get money that was owed to the city. And so I might have a name on that list, I might have some tickets I need to go look at, but I think there's probably millions of dollars sitting in a binder somewhere of unpaid tickets that, you know, some of the concerns that we are looking to feel as far as revenue could be answered by just getting, not doing anything extra, just getting what is deserved through the process. And so I would definitely support this and the intention of Mr. Mersky's amendment, as well as the intention of this ordinance in general. But I would just kind of throw out as well, to remember that there is probably money sitting on, in a binder somewhere that we could utilize as a community, if we have the will, again, to go get it and to enforce what's been put in place. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Brennan?
Yes, I also want to note, to kind of build upon what was said already, is that there has been just a lot of abuse of the system, and I think that with better rules in place, that hopefully that we can collect those fines that are due. I mean, if you do get fined, you have to pay, and you can't just abuse the system and wait till it goes away, or never pay it at all. So hopefully, with the new improvements that are looking in the future to be added, hopefully that will help people to have more accessibility and not have to, you know, worry about the quarters and all that. They could still do their quarters, but they would be, they could use credit cards, and hopefully in the future when that gets, happens and goes forward. So I agree with the, with this change.
Any other comments? Rose, a call for a question to amend the ordinance.
Okay, sponsored by Mr. Mersky, and seconded by Mr. Jones, to a proposed amendment to the traffic code, Section five thirty oh two, the change being five tickets over thirty days old to three tickets over thirty days old for immobilization of vehicle. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. This motion will adopt seven to zero. And then we'll go on to the vote for the
Ordinance.
Ordinance as amended. By Mr. Mersky, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, that council file ordinance number fifteen six oh nine, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the city council. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. City council read and adopt council file ordinance number fifteen six oh nine by yea seven, nay zero, on first reading as amended.
I want to thank council, this was long overdue. Been a long process, and I think the, at the end of the day, the citizens will be happy.
I'll take this to new business, Mr. President.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
I'd like to move the balance of the agenda.
Second. Do we have? One second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Brennan. By all means, Mr. Brennan can second. I apologize.
Rose, duly note, it's Mr. Jones and Mr. Brennan.
Okay.
Tag team.
Do we have any separations, Mr. Jones?
I would actually like to separate number five under new business.
Sure. Which one?
Number five.
Under new business?
Correct. Just for a quick comment.
Okay. Any other separations?
No other separations?
No other separations? Okay.
All right, then, moving the balance of the agenda, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski. Sponsored by Mr. Jones, seconded by Mr. Kwiatowski, resolved by the council of the city of Erie, that Selina and King of fifteen, ten fifty-two West Twenty-Second Street is hereby appointed, reappointed to the city of Erie zoning hearing board. Ms. King's term will expire December thirty first, 2022. Comment?
Mr. President?
Yes, Mr. Jones.
Just want to take a moment to thank Ms. King for her willingness to serve and volunteer in this position. She's done well, I think, in the capacity that she's served. And I also want to take this moment to just thank everyone that accepted the request that I've given over the last several years to serve on an authority or a board, because it is a commitment, and it's a significant commitment, and they're decision-makers, and they help to craft policy and craft agenda for our community. So I won't go down the whole list, but again, Ms. King and Mr. Ben Wilson, Chantel Hilliard, I think, and I see he's being reappointed to another authority, his willingness to serve continues in our community, and so many others. And so I just want to take a moment, again, to thank Ms. King and to thank, for being willing to serve for another term, but also I'll take a moment to thank all of those who have served at my request and appointment over the last twelve years or so. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Roll call. Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Kwiatowski, and this resolution will pass seven to zero. And that'll take us to committee reports, Mr. President.
Okay, we'll start with Mrs. Arrington today.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I would like to thank Mr. Jones and Mr. Brennan for their services. It's been a pleasure working with you guys. You know, I thank all the help you have given me since I started, and you are truly a great asset to city council, and I'm sure you'll be a better asset out to our community. So I know you're helping the community don't stop here. So I really appreciate you guys, and, you know, good luck in a new chapter in your lives, and maybe one day you can come back and take me to lunch. And with that said, I'd like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to 2018. I'm looking forward to our new city council members that'll be coming aboard. And this is history, everybody, three women on city council. Three women. This is history for us, and I'm really looking forward to it. Not that I don't love you guys, because I do, but one woman and six guys, oh. So now it kind of evens out the battlefield. So I'm looking forward to that, you know, and also with our new incoming mayor, I'm looking forward to that. And really, it's all about change, because our community definitely needs change, and I think we're heading in the right direction. So God bless, and everybody have a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Mr. Winarski?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few comments, and I'll be very brief on this one comment, but even though it is season of giving, I just really don't agree with the vote last night on adding another five dollars to our registrations for our vehicles. We as citizens of the state, as well as Erie and Erie County, are paying over fifty cents per gallon towards roads and bridges. And grant you, I don't know, it's just more principal than the five bucks per vehicle. I mean, I guess I have a few more than five-dollar vehicles, so I'm gonna pay a little more, which is what it is. But just one of those things I don't personally agree with, just because of what we do with our state gas tax on that. With that being said, did speak with Brenda Sandberg, executive director from the Port Authority. She is going to present council at one of our meetings in January, their master plan. I know it's been put out there on the internet, put out there publicly, but she's gonna come on a personal note, bring it to council, and show us their thoughts, ideas, or plans, and go from there. I also attended the MTA board meeting this past Monday. Really nothing to report there. The expansion on Fourteenth Street naturally moving along strong. As I've reported in the past, they got the exterior part of it done, so they can do some interior work over the winter months. But once again, I think we normally get a bilateral or twice-a-year update from our executive director from the MTA, and we'll probably do that in the springtime also. What can I say? David and Curtis, great guys, great colleagues. Thanks for your service, your commitment, and your friendship. The council is not, it's about working together and trying to get things accomplished, not always agreeing, but I appreciate both you guys for what you've done, that's all there is to it, and being an asset on council, working with us for the good of the city. So all the best to both of you, good guys, and good luck to you. Administration, who knows what's gonna happen here? Hopefully, it isn't our last meeting, but you never know what the new year brings, but it's always, it's been a pleasure. You've always been open, you've always been there for us whenever I've had questions. Good luck, hope to see you around, and thanks for being good friends also. Merry Christmas, everyone, Happy New Year. We'll start this over again next year. Thanks.
Mr. Mersky?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report, as we talked about with the ordinance today for the change, amending the traffic code. Also with that comes modernization of our parking system, which will allow our residents to pay with debit cards and also with their cell phones. I think this modernization is long overdue. As Mr. Kwiatowski said, we've been working on this for quite some time, and the difficult thing was to try to modernize and pay for the system without gouging the people who use the system, and to try to find a balance of, you know, the fees for parking with the hundreds of thousands of dollars that it's going to take to modernize with the new equipment and the elimination of the old system. And so we were able to do that over time, and we're glad that that's finally coming to fruition. And when this ordinance passes, we're looking for a summer start to some new parking meters, which will be exciting, the first of which will be around the Erie County Courthouse. That was chosen because they have the most use in front of the courthouse. When it comes to redevelopment, they had a meeting. I talked with TJ Sandell, the chair of the Erie City Land Bank, and as I said previously, we're looking to get some money for the city land bank to get them operational. Unlike what's been reported in the Erie Times News, they said they're just an organization on paper. They've had meetings. What they don't have is the money to acquire property right now. We started them, they are meeting. There isn't appointed board, there's a representative from the school district on there, a representative from the mayor's office, from this body, and from redevelopment. And the other thing that's misrepresented is that it is using city money. It's run out of the Erie Redevelopment Authority office, and so the Redevelopment Authority staff is the same staff for our land bank, and it's not the city of Erie staff running that. So I just wanted to make that clear to the people out in the community. And finally, I want to thank Councilman Brennan, Councilman Jones, for your service to the community, and also Mr. Carley, Ms. Beck, and Mayor Sennett. It's been a pleasure working with all of you, and we've gone through some challenging times and some smooth times, but at the end of the day, everybody had the interests of the citizens at heart with every decision that was made, and so we want to thank you in your future endeavors. And I also wanted to recognize County Councilman-elect Carl Anderson, who's in the audience today. Thank you for being here. Also, our incoming city councilwomen-elect Liz Allen and Ms. Schaff, thank you guys for being here. And to the citizens, season's greetings, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and we hope you have a restful and enjoyable and peaceful holiday. Thank you.
And to my vice president, Mr. Mel Witherspoon.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. There will be additional plaques and awards given next year, because I want to recognize all the individual businesses that support given next year because I want to recognize all the individual businesses that support our kids. Again, we have them five days a week, usually from 5:00 to about 9:30, 10:00 when we wrap up. And according to the police report, those are the hours that in our normal troubled areas, that's when the callouts are very, very low. So, we're causing an impact there. And so, I just want you to know. I think I have maybe about 12 more. I'm going to try to get them all up at the same time because Mr. Murzky and I have a little contest of who gives out the most. He had about 20 of them up here today. So, I have some more to go, but I just want to let you know that that's coming. To Councilman Jones and Councilman Brennan, my mother always taught me, if you don't have nothing good to say about someone, don't say anything. Thank you, Mr. President. Administration, thank you very much.
Boy, is this meeting going out of order quick. And now, finally, our outgoing council people. Mr. Brennan, you want to go first?
I'll go first. I did want to report. I was at the Economic Development Announcement. That was this past week, the Governor Wolf. Again, some great, great news for Erie. 20 new state investments on projects at the Erie Bayfront throughout the city. So, there's collaboration with DCD and Pendant with the $30 million for the design and construction improvements for the Bayfront Parkway. So, again, that's good news. Bayfront Erie, Bayfront East Side Task Force, $300,000 for repairs of properties in the east and west side Bayfront neighborhoods. And then the Sister St. Joseph Neighborhood Network, $50,000 for facade improvements. And then also was the approval of 19 neighborhood assistance programs for 1.6 million in tax credits. So, all good news. But I think that one of the greatest pieces of information in that meeting is that a lot of the leaders there said that Erie's now speaking with one unified voice. Harrisburg knows a priority, so that's very important and we need to continue to do that and keep improving that. Curtis, definitely going to miss you, Curtis. There's just so much. It's just been a pleasure to serve with you. The council's going to really lose a lot of institutional knowledge with all your experience. I think the meetings will be much shorter with you not being here. We'll see, we'll see what happens there.
Liz is coming, so I don't know.
But I know you've helped me a lot just with the knowledge of city operations, things that happened in the past, and I really appreciate that knowledge that you brought to council and personally to help each of the members out. And you've been passionate about what you do and you really represented the city well and I appreciate that. Thank you. I guess I just wanted to say thank you also. I really cherish my role in council. It's going to be bittersweet to leave because I really enjoyed it. It's been a privilege and an honor to serve on council and I'm hoping I've had some type of positive impact on the city. Yeah, as was said earlier, is that we've not always agreed. We've somehow debated our differences, but I think we've represented the city. As many tough decisions had to be made. I know each and every one of you are here because you want to make a difference. I hope that that respect and humor, which will usually treat each other now, will continue and I'm sure it will. Our common passion for our city and putting the city before politics is what has always united us. The next council will continue to face many of the same challenges. Blight, tight budgets, economic development, infrastructure prioritization, quality of life issues, making decisions guided by the comp plan, and also working with our school district to just name a few. But I know all of council will work with Mayor-elect Schumberg on all these issues and also the Erie Refocus Action Team to move our city forward and also to work with our city for the upcoming neighborhood meetings that I know Mayor-elect Schumberg has discussed. I also want to thank the citizens of Erie who have trusted me and supported me throughout my years in council. I also want to thank my wife and kids for the sacrifice that they've given for, you know, me not being home at one time, going to a lot of meetings, a lot of events throughout the past six years. And my colleagues in council, Rose, Lori, Marilyn, thank you for all your hard work and support. Yeah, everyone works very hard to get things done around here and that's how things happen. Thank you to Mayor Sennett, to Jill and Greg. Thank you for all your support. And all the entire City of Erie staff for all the work that they've done. Yeah, I know in my years in council, every time I made a phone call to get something done, it was always prioritized and a lot of things I'd done just by making a phone call and I think people really care. So, I thank you all again and I wish you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you, David. I know, yeah, I think that's it. I know, Curtis, you've been, you've been not looking forward to this, but Rose, you can set the clock at probably 10 minutes. Mr. Councilman Jones, go ahead.
Mr. President, I am overwhelmed by the opportunity I've had to serve. My hometown, my home city. Won't be overly sentimental on purpose. There was something that I wanted to do. I never forget, you know how you have to write those "What I Want to Be When I Grow Up" kind of speeches or papers in high school? And one of the things I said I wanted to do was go away to college, gain some experience, do some things, come back and try to make my city, my hometown, better. And I've been purposeful to try to do that. And I hope, my hope and my desire is that I was able to do something and this body's been better because I've sat here and this community's better because I've sat here. And so, I'm honored to have had the trust of the citizens to be able to do that and the camaraderie of my fellow council members to be able to do that. And I've seen a lot of different faces in these chairs over the last 12 years and so I honor all the work that all of them have done to make everything what it is because everything has built up to this moment. And so, I honor all of that. I want to thank my family, my parents. I'm the oldest of 14. Probably won't be too many other council members who can say that they're the oldest of 14 children. No twins. Put that little caveat out there. No quadruplets, no six at a time, no sextuplets. Just great people. I'm honored to be the oldest of Curtis and Vicky Jones, Senior. Honored for that. Thankful to my children. Curtis, my oldest son is 22 today and so he's not here. He's out. I said, "Come on, man. Come to this meeting." He's like, "Dad, yo, hey, it's my birthday." I said, "Absolutely. You've given a lot of your life to be, to this work as well." So, I honor my children, Curtis, Hannah, Elijah, and Micah. Thank you all for allowing me to do what I do and for our city. And a lot of what I've done is for you all and I want you to know that. These last 12 years, there's been a lot of change in my life in a lot of different areas, a lot of different ways. But it's all good. And so, everyone in every place that they've served in my life and been a part of my life, I thank them for that. So, I thank Mann and I honor Mann and for her being with me my early years and I honor Erica for being with me in my current time. We're all family, right? And so, I honor that. I want to honor my campaign team, my first campaign team. Boy, they made me look like something I wasn't because I was 28 years old. And my campaign manager, Tyrone Clark, who's in the room today, I honor you as another father and mentor. And man, you made me look good. You made me pose for pictures and made me knock on doors and I thank you for that. And I hope that, we don't talk as much as we have, you know, earlier in my tenure, but I'm absolutely a product of a lot of work that you've done and so many other people. Rose, you are something special. She fussed at me earlier today. I said, "Well, hey, you might as well end like you started." And so, I thank you, Rose, and Marilyn, and Lori, the current staff in the Clerk's Office. But I'd be remiss to not mention Mr. Clem, Gloria, may she, may her soul be resting, and Marina, and even Ruthie came through and graced us with her exuberance for a while. And so, I honor her as well. I know this is going to be more than five minutes, so... But I'm not coming back next year, so it's... And so, we talked about history. When I came on council, it was historic for one, for multiple reasons. One, it was the first time three blacks, three African-Americans were actually elected to City Council, myself, Ruby Jenkins' husband, and Dr. Lonnie Gatlin. And then, when we had vacancies, we had made more history because I was able to call a friend and someone else called a friend, David Gonzalez, who was the first Hispanic to ever serve or to serve on City Council as an appointee. There's a lot of history there, you know, and I honor all of that. And here's the thing, we did some research. I think I was the youngest elected, Bob, in Erie history, or very close to it. And I was 28 years old when I won my first election and we've been riding strong ever since. I've got some notes here. You know, I'm doing good, not to be teary-eyed, because you know, I'm passionate. My passion doesn't stop. Jill's crying for me. We've done a lot of great work. We've done a lot of great changes. The reason, here's the thing too, it's funny. You all think it's bad now. When I first came on council, we had meetings every Wednesday unless there was a fifth Wednesday in the month and then we got a break. And that was only a couple of months a year. So, one of my initiatives, and I'll take the thanks later, that you all want to be here every Wednesday. That was one of the things. And it's kind of ironic that I break the five-minute rule because I asked to implement the five-minute rule. So, the irony of that is quite glaring as well. But those are some of the things that we've done. I honored the administration, Mayor Sennett. I ran for school board director at the same time he ran for city council and he served two years on council. I didn't win school board director, but two years later I was on council. And so, Jill, Greg, Paulie, you know, I can go Ken-Zack. I can go down the list and I probably shouldn't, but everyone in the administration, those that have been there from the beginning, those have since retired and moved on. And my first finance director, Ron Comorek, who taught me municipal finance 101, is a great, great person. May his soul be resting as well. Jim Thompson, who was a mentor who didn't like me at first. I'll never forget it. Real quick, I'll never forget. I was going to a campaign night. You all know this story, this rat race. And I go in and they said, "Curtis Jones." And they're like, "Who the heck? Who the heck is that?" And so, he and Ian Murray are sitting there talking, "Who's this kid? Who's this kid?" They don't know I'm the kid. And so, "Who's this guy?" And so, I walked by and they look at me, "Oh, shoot." Because they knew I heard them talking about me. And I ended up winning and Jim was absolutely a mentor for me the time that he was here and I honor that as well. May his soul be resting. Let's see, I have some lists. I'm checking. I should have checked things off. All of my council members again, Pat Capabianca, Jessica Haran, Kunso, Joe Schumberg, David Gonzalez, Ruby, Lonnie Gatlin, and any others I may have missed in the moment. I thank all of you because you have been patient with my long-windedness and my passion at times, but it's always out of my heart for the love of my city. And I'm going to continue to share that love and continue to be a resource and to use my resources to make this place better because I still have children and some way down the line, I'll have some grandchildren. So, I'm good with that. Again, Mr. Clark, Lynn and Jim, Darby, Gwendolyn White, so many others that helped, and every single citizen who voted for me. I honor that. I'm just about done. So, I have a great mentor who has since passed away, Robert Gaines, who was my pastor, my mentor, a great example. And all these little prayers every meeting, I... My swearing in in 2006, I said, "I honor..." What did I say? Something really trying to be politically correct because you know, like church and state and you can't be talking about God and then we pledge allegiance to God and all that stuff. But I'm, and I got a midnight call. I'll never forget it. And I said, "You know, who was calling me at midnight?" And he calls me, my mentor, my pastor. He says, "Did you thank God? Did you thank God?" And I was like, "Yes." I said, "Well, I said my higher power." That's what I said. He said, "Well, who's your higher power?" He went in on me. And from that, every meeting since, there's been a prayer or a moment of recognizing those who are in our community and asking for the wisdom and guidance in an overt verbal way. And it has offended some, but I think it's blessed all, whether they realize it or not. And so, I appreciate this time, this extra time today. I appreciate the 12 years. I appreciate the years that are, the best is yet to come. And for the next two council members and many, many more to come behind me, I hope I've been an example. I will tell you one thing I have not been is perfect, but I've been committed. And I am thankful for all of the help and support from those that I didn't name. You shouldn't name names because you always miss somebody, but thank you. Thank you. And David, it's been great serving with you for the time that you have served and you made me become more relevant or, excuse me, aware of the importance of historic components of our city. You know, I was never really conscious of that. And your humility and your passion, I honor that too. And you can translate that in some other areas of our community and we'll be better for it. So, I love all of you. I have nothing but love for every single one of you, even those that pushed me by disagreeing with me. And they can only tell me how sharp I dressed. They can't tell me anything else, honestly. I honor that. And the last thing I will say, it is all about intention. What is our intention? Even if we disagree, as long as our intention is healthy, our intention is pure, our intention is for doing what is right and appropriate, we can't go wrong. And so, keep fighting the good fight. We all are here together. You know, we're all here together and let's do what's best for our city. Again, thank you very much for this privilege and this extra time and all this stuff. And whatever I miss, charge it to my emotional point and not to my heart. And so, again, I love you all and I'm not going anywhere. I'll be around, hanging around and helping. And if I can help in any capacity on the project or something here, I'm all in. So, thank you.
David.
Listen, keep the applause. Throw me some money. Shoot, this, I mean, pass the offer plate, right?
You haven't had a better oath since high school.
It's been a long time. I used to get...
David, I feel like I got to give you another five.
Well, good thing you pulled your hair today. Good thing you gathered with some...
That's right, that's right.
Thank you, Mr. Councilman Winarsky. How do you, I learned two things. Never follow children and never follow Curtis. It's like a losing proposition, but my report will be quick. I didn't tend, I did not attend the airport meeting, but my liaison informed me and through the news that, it's good news that the airport's going to get a few more seats on the aircraft for those who fly in and out of Erie or have family that flies in and out. That's good news because connections are sometimes precarious and seats are at a premium at this time of year. And as Councilman Murzky said, the parking, that the parking ordinance that we passed today has been, contrary to what you may read in the print media or the, any media, we've been working on this for four years. It's been a work in progress. It's been a long time coming and I think it's going to do a lot to end all the excuses about, "I didn't have coins." You'll have many options now. You'll have hopefully phone app. You'll be able, you know, you sit in the ballgame or sit at the concert and if it runs over, you won't have to worry. You can feed your meter from the car or, you know, it's just going to be more convenient, more, more modern. At the same time, just like the issue with garbage bills, this council discovered that there was a few unpaid parking bills. And from someone who worked at a, many years ago at the Parking Authority, I know that to be true. So, I think that's a gap that we need to close quickly. Before we go out asking citizens to pay more taxes, we need to do a better job collecting the fines and the permits and other things that we do around City Hall before we go out and ask for more real estate taxes. So, I'm committed to doing whatever it is to clear up that log jam, whatever that total is, and I think it's going to be a pretty good total. I think that if, you know, you break the law, you deserve to pay. I mean, you know, you know what you're doing wrong. I see a lot of people when they come to City Hall, "Well, I only went in for a minute." Why you went in and you didn't pay? And that's the luck, you know. I've got tickets too and I have to pay like everyone else. So, I think this is going to be good in the long run. Now, to end the meeting, we'd like to say that in politics, you see a lot of people come and you see a lot of people go. You make a lot of new friends and you watch people leave and one door opens and another door closes and sometimes the same people will come back again. And you just never know. Life is full of many surprises. But I will say that outside your own personal family, every board and every council that I've ever served on has been like family in a way. We fight in the back. We disagree. We argue. But then, you... But then, you might find us, after the meeting, breaking bread together or having a light refreshment. But that's the way it goes, you know. You learn that you can argue out here, you can argue in the back room, but you never make it personal. You don't take it to the families, and that's the way it should be. And I think we've been very blessed on this council. I think it's a hard-working council the last four years. We've tackled a lot of, a lot of issues that were left for many years. The garbage bills, the parking. There's been, and I'll mention this with David, a couple of things he's done and Curtis, but we're losing two great members. David, I want to thank you for your passion with things like the demolition delay ordinance, urban gardening, urban planning. Your look as an architect and as a person of vision offers another viewpoint that many of us don't have. And I'm going to miss it, and I know you'll do well, Dave, and we might see you back someday. And Curtis, I wasn't always, I mean, I was upstairs when you were first starting down there, but I kept an eye on you, and you know, you're always, you've grown a lot. I can tell you that, that your wisdom is almost, I'm telling you, you're getting into the old man's club now.[1448.54][1448.54](Laughter).
Is it a free membership?
Yes, you do. But your wisdom will be missed as long as your spiritual guidance. We'll have to find somebody else to do that before the meetings now. But just every time we had a tough issue, was your ability to stay back from a hothead like me, or somebody that was real, you know, calm, and you were kind of like the voice of wisdom in between there. And we'll miss that. And I know you'll do good, and what I'll really miss, though, is that, I'll give you one last one, Curtis.
I'll take it. Appreciate it, Cass.
Good luck to David, and good luck to you, Curtis. And you both did a great job, and I think the city's going to be less for you being gone. And I think we're going to miss you, and good luck in the future. Jill?
Mr. President, can I say, real quick? I got a text message from one of the community historians who told me I was inaccurate. I think I may have been the second youngest.
Who was the youngest?
Is it Brian Doherty?
Oh, yeah, you're right.
Super young. Yeah, and so, I, yeah, some 18, 21, some, wow, 21? Okay. So, I did want to fix that. I don't want to, I want all my information accurate when I leave. And so, I guess second place isn't bad.
But you're gradually getting out of that 30-overs.
I did want to say that, for the sake of clarity, all jokes aside.
It's okay to get old, Curtis, you'll be okay.
It's all right, thank you, thank you. You're doing it well.[1548.23][1548.23](Laughter).
I promised to be very quick, because clearly, I have something in my eye that got in there when I looked out and I saw Curtis' family sitting in the audience. And there's nothing more important than family. All of you have become like family to me, as many of you have said. It's been a long 12 years. I'm just grateful to have been able to have served Mayor Sennett in this regard, and to have had the opportunity to make the friendships and acquaintances and networking opportunities that I've had. It's been an honor for me to serve with each of you. I wish everybody the best of luck and wish the best for the city in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. And thank the mayor, been a great 12 years. We were in a real mess 12 years ago, and I think thanks to this council and the administration, come a long way. And Greg, you're not getting away.[1598.54][1598.54](Laughter). Oh, geez.
Thank you, Mr. President.
That was a Fred Astaire pose, right there.
After almost 30 years, I will be retiring from my position here.
Amen.
I think I'd like to quote William Butler Yeats, "This is no country for old men." I've, man, this is, I think, I try to count it, it's like my 535th council meeting. I've worked for and with maybe 38 councilmen. Some of you I've come to know very well. Mr. Kwiatowski, about 12 years ago, we were involved, and I had the pleasure of representing you in a piece of litigation, which was presidential in the state of Pennsylvania. Mr. Witherspoon, I think we go way back to the Joyce-Savakia age. And some of you, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Kwiatowski?
Kwiatowski, that's him.
Jones? And to let's agree, Mrs. Arrington, you've been only here for a couple of years. But I feel like we've got to know one another, and all of us have got to know one another. In my legal career, I think it's been one of the greatest honors to represent all of the city citizens, the City of Erie in court and wherever. And I would say, this is going to be one of my fondest memories. And I thank you. And I thank you all for the opportunity to represent you. Thank you.
Thank you.[1731.91][1731.91](Applause).
36 years to give a report. There you go.[1743.04][1743.04](Laughter).
Mr. President?
Yes.
I just want to remind you, next meeting, the timer will be back on.[1752.82][1752.82](Laughter).
Hey, Greg, remember what MacArthur said?
I shall...
Old lawyers never...
(Laughter).
And that, I believe, bring, Mr. Jones, you want to?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I move that we adjourn this meeting.
Mr. Brennan? Do I hit the hammer?
I second that.
How long should I delay this?
Not long. The city council adjourns at 9:30. Mr. Kwiatowski, Mrs. Arrington, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Jones, Mr. Merzke, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.